I do have 7:30.
Likewise.
So with that being said, I would like to call our public hearing to order, 7:30, Monday, June 14th, 2021, via Zoom or teleconference. Before I seat members, I need to ask all of you to see if anyone have a conflict with this application? With none, no conflicts, I will seat regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Dave Miller, myself, Jim Conway. Is Alan with us tonight? I can't see. Alan Johnson? Okay, for Alan Johnson, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill Horgan's up? Proceeding. Cheryl Candy, what do you think? Is that?
I think Bill Horgan, I think that's correct.
Okay. So we have Kim, Elaine, Dave Miller, myself, Jim Conway, and Bill Horgan for Alan Johnson. What we have before us is a petition by Anna Carter, five Chalbys Road, to amend zoning regulations pertaining to non-conforming barns, section 3.10.17 and definitions. Legal notices. Roxbury website. Hold a public hearing, Monday, May 10th. Oh, this, I apologize, this goes back to May, our May meeting was canceled. The legal notice is basically the same, other than the dates are different. So the public hearing via Zoom is June 14th, 7:30. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public comment on proposed tax amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations as petitioned by Anna Carter, five Chalbys Road, Roxbury. The proposed amendments are to section 3.10.17 and definitions. Somebody's got a lot of background noise.
Jim, can I just, the, the public, the legal note, yeah, who is that? The legal notice, if you flip up two more pages, will be the correct one.
Okay, gotcha.
It's dated May 13th because the notice was slightly different because of the, the, you know, moving of the meeting. Thank you.
Right, yep. The legal notice correctly, Roxbury zoning commission will hold a virtual public hearing, followed by zoning meeting on Monday, June 14th, 2021, 7:30 PM. Virtual public hearing on the zoning amendment petitioned by Anna Carter for revision zoning regulation, section 3, 10, 17, and definitions regarding non-conforming barns that was noticed and scheduled for May 10th, 2021, was not held due to a problem with Zoom address. Thus will be extended to open at the June 14th, 2021 zoning commission meeting. This extension is pursuant to Governor Lamont's EO 71, and extended by EO 11 that allows 90 days' extension for zoning deadlines for public hearings and decisions during the public emergency period for COVID-19. Further, any zoning application decision deadlines for matters on the May 10th, 2021 Roxbury zoning commission agenda, including Dennis McDonald's application for modifications, and uses it will be extended to the conclusion of June 14th, 2021. Okay. Roxbury Town Clerk was noticed. Why don't I take and read the proposed text at this point? Everybody was noticed with the proposed text. Proposed text. 3.10.17. Any non-conforming barn that straddles the front property setbacks, excluding side and rear setbacks, may have use of the portion of the structure that is located outside of the setback conforming area. The conforming portion will be allowed to be converted into habitable space for other permissible uses. Now, this is the proposed text that's going to be added. With respect to the non-conforming portion of a barn located within the front setback, or in the case of a corner lot within a front or side yard, provided the property line associated with that yard divides the lot from a street right away. Improvements to the barn located within the existing footprint can be made associated with conversion of some or all of the barn into habitable space for other permitted use, as long as the height of it, of the expanded or altered portion of the barn may not exceed the pre-existing height of the barn. Does not exceed any other height limitations contained in these regulations. Conforms to all other applicable zoning requirements, so is not to create a new non-conformity other than the expansion or alteration within setback allowed by this regulation. Further, any modification of the barn within a setback line must be positioned behind the non-conforming barn or away from the affected property line. For example, the modification must be behind the barn relative to the street adjoining the applicable yard. All other applicable regulations shall still apply. A complete site plan along with an affidavit shall be submitted stating that the portion of the structure located inside the setback shall remain unchanged. Definition of a barn. Structures that house or formerly housed livestock, included, including but not limited to cattle and horses, as well as farm equipment and fodder and often grain feed or hay. That is the proposed text definition. And this went to the Roxbury Town Clerk and the public notice registry. Those are all the legal notices. Now for our referrals. Roxbury Planning Commission. The response from the Roxbury Planning Commission is as follows. On April 8th, 2021, Roxbury Planning Commission reviewed a petition to amend the Roxbury zoning regulations pertaining to non-conforming barns, which was submitted by Anna Carter of five Chalbys Road. The commission felt that the proposed tax amendments do not improve, promote, or enhance additional housing units within Roxbury. Further, the commission agreed the proposed tax amendments are not compatible with the plan of conservation and development. Therefore, the planning commission does not support the proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations. Northwest Hill Council of Governments. Response. There with me. Northwest Council of Governments staff has reviewed this referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies for the known concerns of neighboring towns. Western Connecticut Council of Governments. And let's see what they have to say. The opinion of West Cog staff is that the proposal is of local interest with minimal intermunicipal impact, therefore is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities. And we have the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments. Recommendations. Staff finds the proposed tax amendment not to be regionally significant and has no apparent intermunicipal impact. So there you have the legal notices, the referrals. And at this time, I would like to ask the, our petitioner, Anna Carter, to explain.
Good evening. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Ken Slater, Anna Carter, and I am a partner in the, of the Talon Sage, I head up the municipal group and land use group. I was engaged after it was discovered that the Gradens had started improvements to put a dormer on the inside of a historic barn. And the circumstances of that were, in the record, you'll see that Grayden Carter had written a letter, and this stemmed from an application that they had filed before they were represented by council to get a variance from the requirements of the regulations because the improvements they were going to make to make the barn usable in that, that part of the floor into an office, they would need a variance because it's, the barn is located within a setback. The law has become so strict with respect to variances that if you follow the law, literally, no, no pool could be allowed with a setback, no garage could be built, no, virtually anything in association with a residential home. If it's already a home is there, you can't make an improvement there. Many ZBAs are forced right now to sort of look the other way, and if the neighbors don't oppose, then variances are granted and reasonable improvements are allowed, unreasonable ones are not. But if you follow the specific letter of the law to prove a hardship, it is virtually impossible, which is why actually you'll also hear, hear from, from Neil Marcus, another attorney working for the Carters, who I've, I've known for a very long time, and we're both part of the executive committee of the Bar Association, and we're working on trying to lessen the harshness of the law regarding variances. But I, I think they expected because there was, there'd be uniform neighborhood support to make these kinds of improvements, both where they're located and, and what they helped accomplish, which is to, to protect the barn, that there would be no opposition to the variance, and there wasn't, and that the commission, the ZBA would have granted it. The ZBA, to its credit, followed the law strictly and said that this does not qualify for a hardship, and it doesn't. That's, it's just a practical thing that ZBAs grant. So apparently, the Gradens also learned through a, a friend who was an attorney that there's a statute that if you put up an improvement in a setback and a lawsuit, not just complaint, but a lawsuit isn't brought by the municipality within three years, then it becomes legally non-conforming. So the improvements that were started, had they been completed, and had they stayed there and nobody filed a complaint for more than three years, they would have become legally non-conforming, and there'd be no issue. Obviously, that's not what happened. Someone saw that the improvements were being made, not a neighbor, but someone had made a complaint, and that led to a prospective enforcement action. And for good cause, I, I understand that fully. They, they, they applied for the variance and they didn't get it, yet they made the improvement. That was a practical solution. Unfortunately, I'm a town attorney for a lot of towns, and, and folks put up correct garages and sheds and things in a setback because they know no one's going to have a problem. Time goes by, the town says this is really not all that important to us, and it becomes legal. So I, I think they hoped that that would have been what happened, and it didn't, but maybe it's a blessing in a disguise, blessing in disguise. I was engaged, talked to the commission's attorney, Gil McTaggart, and learned that your commission had relatively recently adopted some regulations intending to value the resource of, of historic barns in Roxbury. And that it is, you know, it is a, one thing that Roxbury is particularly well-known for. And I was thinking, because you had a, a regulation also looking at historic, or I'm sorry, the non-conforming homes, you have a section of the regulation which is really well-drafted to try to allow some kinds of changes on non-conformities in a way that makes sure that it's away from the, the setback, the, the street. It's basically behind the structure, because that's what the whole purpose of the setback says. You don't want your improvements too close to your neighbor. And so that, that the, the part that's least defensive would be part on the back, because you can't see it, and that's, that's a reality. You had that built into your non-conforming section of the regulations, and actually, that's where I was thinking of starting when in talking to Attorney McTaggart and learning a little bit about your recent efforts with respect to historic barns, that maybe the regulation that you recently adopted regarding barns might be a good place to provide an opportunity, another way in which that resource in the community could be utilized without doing violence to the whole purpose of, you know, the setbacks and parts of the regulations. So I drew from the non-con, some of your provisions in your, your non-conforming structures regulations and incorporated that into the, the adaptive reuse of barns to enable improvements that would allow the use of a barn to provided that the improvements are ones that are, again, largely not visible, which is in the case here. And, and I think that's borne out by the, the support that the Carters received from the community, in particular their neighbors, I mean, you're involved in these things where typically it's the neighbors are jumping up and down that they don't want, you know, don't want this change made or that change made. What's remarkable for, to me in reading all the letters of support is, and I'm sure you've seen this before, you don't, you don't zone by a show of hands, by a popularity contest, you're there to do a job for the, for the citizens of Roxbury, the powers of the zoning commission, and all of the purposes that are behind the adoption of zoning. What was remarkable in those letters is while there was definitely support for, for the Carter family and what they've done in the community, that's, that's there, that comes out in several letters. The, the letters really focus on what is the proper focus. It's not, do I like the applicant or not the applicant, but does the proposal make sense? And you have very articulate letters from neighbors and other parts, parts of the community, including the Historic District Commission, that recognize that this, these resources, that they're, you're losing them, you're losing these barns, the, the the economy that is this century, you know, the viability of small farms, it's just not what it was. So unless there's some kind of an economic incentive, some kind of a way in which the building can be used, they tend to be vacant, and then they fall in on their own weight, literally. So this bad situation might be an opportunity for the community, and, and I think it's, it, it comes out of all of those various letters, that this is a way which you can make, allow very modest improvements to historic barns without losing the character of, of that barn, because it's only going to be on, on the rear side and, and not increasing the overall height of the structure. So that is the, that's what was intended by that language and what it was hoped to accomplish. And I would say the correspondence that come to the commission is virtually 100% in support of this, because I, I think, I'm not sure what was, what was happening that night of the planning commission. I read the letter and I said, I must have missed something. And the planning commission made its referral, and it said that it's not going to increase housing. Well, of course it's not, we're not proposing housing in the regulation that, that we're dealing with. Isn't, so that's fine, but then it said it was incompatible with the plan of conservation and development. I said, I, I thought I was missing something, and I jumped into the plan of conservation and development and was happy to see that exactly what I thought I saw the first time is that, in just in 2020, you will see in, in, and at least two, if not three of the action items, historic preservation in the preservation, even barns, is a photograph of a farm and a barn in, in the 2020 plan of conservation and development. And if the planning commissioner were correct, then you folks made a mistake just a few months ago when you adopted the regulation specifically intended to protect and allow the adaptive reuse of barns. So you were not mistaken then, and you wouldn't be mistaken tonight. A change that we're proposing here is absolutely in, 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 supported by the 2020 plan of conservation and development. And, and I will note that that letter doesn't point out where. I wish I could look to what they might have been thinking about where the plan of conservation and development was somehow not, would not be in favor of a regulation that, like the one you adopted some months ago, would also encourage the protection of historic barns. So that's the, the origin of this and where we are in this and think it's an opportunity for the town. Because like the letter said, and like I would say, that this regulation just makes sense. It's not all about the Carter's barn, it's not. It's, are there going to be instances in which you would, could have an historic barn that's located in a setback? And someone would be willing to make an investment to use it in a way that they can't without making some kind of an improvement? And is there a way that you can curtail the improvement so that it's not going to impact the purposes of your regulation? Well, that's exactly what you did in your, in your non-conforming regulations. You, you've done a nice job of confining it in a way to protect against that. We just used some of that same language that you used elsewhere in your regs, applied it here so that you can accomplish that same purpose with respect to, to barns. And would hope that commission would, would see fit to, to approve the regulation as, as we've proposed it. And I'm, I know Attorney Marcus, he, I was initially engaged, and at one point in time, he was going to take over altogether, and we talked about it, and I had worked on drafting this and was involved in the, the early part of this. So we agreed I would be the, I would basically present this proposal, which I, which I drafted after consulting with the town attorney and, and learning a little bit more about what the commission has recently done with respect to historic barns. So with that, I would entertain any questions, but that's all I have to, to present. But again, Attorney Marcus would also like to add, I believe, to, to my presentation.
Well, thank you. Mr. Marcus, would you like to speak at this time?
Yes, sir. If I may, for the record, Neil Marcus, I'm a member of the firm of PC, and I have an office at 158 Deer Hill Avenue in Danbury, Connecticut. And I don't have a lot to add to what Ken Slater has just talked about. My understanding of the history of the, the origins of this proposal are exactly the same as what he has just explained. I came into this, though, through the council in New York, the Carter's attorney in New York City contacted me only because he was concerned that, that the Carters might not be able to do the types of improvement to their barn that we've talked about in this application. And he wanted to know for me if there were any other way that they could repurpose their barn to make it more updated and, and protected into the future without changing the character of the barn. And I told him, actually, having looked at Ken Slater's proposed regulation that's before the commission tonight, that I thought that Ken's proposal was right on point, that in fact, that it, the town of Roxbury has shown in its current regulation a proclivity towards protecting old barns. And that, that in fact, Ken, Ken's amendment, it just moves us one step forward. So that I joined in his approach to resolving the problem. But of course, the attorney in New York wanted to know, but if that fails, what do you have in mind? And I said, well, in my mind, the only other way to repurpose buildings that are non-conforming as to either coverage or setback or dimensions is to take advantage of the Connecticut statute for affordable housing, which is section 8-30G. Because in 8-30G, we're not as concerned with setbacks or building dimensions or coverage. Well, we're only concerned about our health and safety and an overriding concern that, that would make the Affordable Housing Act not apply. In this case, my investigation indicated that the lower portion of the barn was already being used as a poolhouse. And water, septic, the two things that we generally have to deal with most when we're outside of an urban area in making affordable housing, were already in place. So I assured the attorney in New York that we had a backup, but I thought it was less desirable. And as I speak to you today, I got to tell you that I've spent an enormous amount of time since the Affordable Housing Act passed in the early, late 80s, early 90s, doing affordable housing in the towns of Bethel and Brookfield, done some in Bridgewater, even a little bit here in my hometown of Reading. And I'm a firm believer in it, I think, and if anything, the press that's been in front of us lately about the statutes that have been considered, the amendments to statutes in Hartford in this past legislative session would indicate that a lot of people are concerned about affordable housing. But having said that, as much as I'm committed to it, there is no question that what's before you today is much, a, a much better way to accomplish historic preservation of barns. And a, that's another point that, that is dear to my heart. A few years ago, I was up in, in Sharon, Connecticut, looking at the barn on my grandfather's old dairy farm, which he lived in in from 19, 1909 to, excuse me, 1907 to 1919. And as you look at the location of that old barn, you can actually see the stone foundation, and it's not much of a foundation. It's just some stones laid on the ground, and you can see perfectly where that barn used to exist and the silo, the round silo perfectly. However, that barn fell down and went into disrepair and was carted away as junk a long time ago. And that's, and that's a shame. And in Roxbury, of course, you have the opportunity to, to do something to see that that doesn't happen. And I personally can't think of a town in Litchfield County that is more identified with historic barns than Roxbury. I mean, you've got some, some beautiful barns that have been reused and repurposed, including the Carter's barn, which is the second generation of, of a barn on that site. It only goes back into the 19th century, because the earlier barn was somehow fell into disrepair or destroyed by a fire or whatever occurred. But the, the fact of the matter is, you have a historic barn that's somewhat repurposed, and the Carters wish to take it to the next step. But as Ken Slater pointed out, the, the proposal before you this evening goes beyond their barn, it goes through the whole, it applies to the town of Roxbury generally, and it is just really a progressive act and warrants not only your consideration, but your approval. Now, the only negative letter or negative comment has come from the planning commission in its 83A referral. And I'm going to take a quick look, if I can, at the Roxbury letter. From the Roxbury Planning Commission of letters dated June 10th to the Roxbury's zone, not, excuse me. Roxbury Planning Commission letter. She found this place. Give me a minute. The rocks in in the letter, the Planning Commission identifies that the the plan. The amendment as proposed is not in conformity with the town plan of concert. Developed. And of course, Ken Slater has already indicated to you that in fact, if you look at the plan conservation. A plan of conservation development, that it does favor the rehabilitation of historic barns. The letter from the Planning Commission doesn't identify what. What sections the planning commission thinking of. And it the letter talks about. The fact that the planning commission felt that I'm going to quote, felt that the proposed text amendments do not improve promoter enhanced additional housing units within Roxbury. Well, quite honestly, I'm not sure what the planning commission was thinking about because the application to amend the. Regulation has very little to do with housing units. It is aimed at protecting and restoring and. Improving barns. Now, not that you couldn't have housing within the barn, but it's not specifically addressed. To creating a type of housing. And then it goes on. It says the commission, further the commission agreed. That the proposed text amendments are not compatible with the plan of conservation development. And as I say, Attorney Slater has already addressed that, but. Andy Angle, in his letter in support of this application dated June tenth. Two thousand twenty one addresses the planning commission's letter referral. In opposition. And he says that he disagrees and thinks that the proposed changes support the P O C D. And he goes to three goals that are outlined in the P O C D. Goal one is to. Attract and retain young families. And he then says that therefore. A barn could be converted to an accessory apartment, a dwelling, whatever. And to that extent. The plan of conservation and development favors it. But goal two and goal six deals specifically. With maintaining the town's rural character and aiding and adapted and adaptive. Aiding that by an adaptive reuse of of old barns. And the other. Goal, goal six is sustainability, which again is right on point. So. I think if you're going to look at the planning commission's referral, you're going to take a hard look at the letter from Andy Angle because. He hits a nail on the head and basically identifies why. Proposal that's before you informs to conservation and development. The rest of the letters, obviously, if you read them, they're great letters. They're well written, as as was indicated by Ken Slater. Are they well written, well thought out? But what particularly impresses me is that these letters are from. The neighbors who would be immediately impacted by the Carter's barn, the next door neighbors, you know, quite honestly, there aren't many of them. But the ones that are directly next door or across the street have both written in favor of this proposal. So I put a lot of emphasis on that as well as the other letters that just say that this is appropriate. Because this is what Roxbury does. So having said that. I would like. To give serious consideration. And to act quickly in approving this because I feel bad for the Carters who was, as Ken Slater has said, started in this process. Last fall in the hopes that they could create a writing studio or a drawing studio for Grayden Carter and. And so far, they've gotten caught up in in the mire of. Planning and zoning, which they never intended to do, I don't believe. But this is the opportunity this evening to. Resolve that and resolve it in a way that does not do any damage to the neighborhood, does not do damage to any property values. It is in the spirit of what this town, I believe, deems to accomplish based on. The existing regulation that's being amended and based on the plan of conservation development. And if nothing else, just based on taking a ride around the town of Roxbury and looking at the beautiful scenery. And quite honestly, I did that this weekend where I was invited as a guest to friends up in Leister, Vermont. And drove up to Leister and I couldn't happen to miss the fact that as you drive through rural Vermont. The barns are collapsing all over the place. And it I it is just such a different opportunity. Unfortunately, rural Vermont is is somewhat. Poverty stricken. They have pockets that are are very poor and. Roxbury, rural Litchfield County is relatively affluent. And the opportunity is to avoid what you see. In other farming areas and to protect and preserve barns so that they can be appreciated into the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but at the same time, I think that all of your questions should be answered by reading. The correspondence from the people who are directly concerned, and those are the neighbors in Roxbury and the historic. The the historical society that have a real interest in seeing this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a minute and just touch on the letters. We received three more letters. After too late to be posted with the packet, three letters in favor of the amendment from Elaine Lord. Holly Stark. And. Oh, that was Holly Stark, two letters, Elaine Lord and Holly Stark. And I do have that came in a tad late, six letters. Opposing the amendment, six emails opposing the amendment that came in late, too late for the packet.
All right, Jim, Dave Miller here. I have to interrupt. I got to bow out of the meeting. I'm having trouble with a cow capping. So you're going to have to seat somebody else. Sorry.
That's all right. I believe it's a toss up because I think Candy and Cheryl were both seated in April. So. Candy, you want to step in for Dave? Andy Valari?
Oh, sorry, I couldn't unmute. Sure.
Okay, so. Eight oh eight, Candy will be seated. All right.
The chairman, just as a point of information, how appropriate for the member to go to help cast. While we're talking about barns that you couldn't ask for appropriate reason. Thank you.
Yeah, we we know our way around a barn.
I guess so.
Um, all right, now I'd like to open up to public comment. And this is the time when the public can question us or the zoning commission can question. Anna, the Carters. Everything right now comes out on the table. If there's any comment, questions, now's the time.
Excuse me, Jim. Carrie Arsenal.
Can I speak? Is there any kind of order or?
Excuse me, Jim, it's Julie. Carrie Arsenal has her hand up to speak.
Okay, just mention your name for the record. I can't see everybody on my screen, so you have to just maybe Julie can see all of you.
Hi, it's Carrie Arsenal. At first I had my hand up because I couldn't hear because of the echo. And I I just had a quick question. You mentioned those letters in support, but I didn't hear our letter mentioned. My husband and I, Andrew Wood, had submitted a letter for the last meeting that went to funk, and I think other people submitted letters too.
Right, I have I have twenty twenty two of them.
Oh, okay, okay, good. I just wanted to say that. I also just wanted to say a quick comment of I run down that street every weekday in Chalobe. If somebody could turn their phone off while the dogs are barking, that would be great. Just turn your vol your your sound off. I'll wait. Thank you. I run down that Chalobe's hill every day, especially since I've heard about this application and I have looked for the. Supposed goiter on the side of the building and I I can't actually see it from the road. If I stop and I look. And I'm trying to find what everybody's the problem is, the visual disturbance in the road. I I actually stop in the middle of the hill and different parts of the hill and I try to find it and I don't see it. So I'm I'm partially curious as to sort of why the denial of the application if if that's in fact of it seems like that's a a large part of what it's about. Is because of the visual disturbance on the road and the the setback and all that. I don't. And and it just feels like. It just feels prohibitive in in such a way that actually just makes no sense. And I I'm just curious as to. Have has anybody else come down that street and looked? There's really nothing to see. I don't I don't really understand what the problem is.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Julie, if you see some hands or.
David Foxley has raised his hand.
Okay, just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, this is Ethan Leidinger. I'm here with my husband, David Foxley. We live on Mallory Road and. We just think it's it's hugely important to try to maintain these historic structures in town. And I think people might not realize just how quickly these barns do fall into disrepair. And I think that encouraging people to make some sort of use of them is actually very thoughtful and progressive. And failing to do so, I think, would be a fiduciary mistake candidly. So I guess I don't fully understand the opposition perspective. Because I think this is investing in the future of the town and its architecture.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole Wallace.
I have the same comment that we submitted a letter and I didn't hear it mentioned. I'll recap most of what it covered. Every sort of enhancement and recommitment to making our house on South Street more authentic and. In line with the traditions of what Roxbury looks like is inspired by what the Cartons have Carters have done to their home. It is a draw. It, I think, is a model for, if I can be so blunt, New Yorkers who have the privilege now more than ever to spend more time here and and call it home, to honor the town. And to honor its traditions and try to live up to them. And I think the refusal seems capricious. So I'd like to understand it myself.
Jim, it's John Cody. I can answer that question rather simply, if you like.
Yeah, I was going to let everybody speak and then, you know, address any of the concerns, but go ahead. Yeah.
Well, rather simple. The the biggest concern about this is because the Carters applied for a permit were denied. They went to Z B A as. Proper were denied and they did the the construction without any permits whatsoever. Um, that is why they're here tonight, I believe. Again, later on, I'll have the Z E O report. It'll be much more in depth.
Well, that doesn't answer my question. That seems punitive, man. What's the substantive reason for the refusal?
That is the punishment. That sounds like a punishment rather than an actual.
The regulations three point ten. We'll I'll get into that later on. Thank you.
Right. This is standard procedure to petition for an amendment. This reg has been in place for many, many years. And it didn't allow any expansion of nonconforming structures. And now we're looking into allowing expansions. We're not against any of this. We just haven't had it in our regulations. And we have to follow our regulations. So this is about amending that and correcting it and going forward. None of us are against what they want to do. It's just that currently the way they're written, you can't do it. But we change things. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Lisa Worth Hubert has raised her hand.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just want to point out first, Mr. Chairman. Our letter was sent late and it wasn't one of the ones that you read, the names that you read. So may I resend that to you? So you have that? And then the other thing I wanted just to bring up. As we, first of all, we are next door neighbors to the Carters. We live at twenty three North Street. And I just want to point out that we've lost a dozen barns in town. Since the barn stories catalogs Roxbury's agricultural buildings in two thousand and ten. And that's all too often due to neglect for lack of practical use or purpose. So. This is something that we're living through and we see this around us. And I think the work they're doing is is really beautiful and we. Are in complete and a complete support.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Can I talk?
Her, sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand. It's Anne Coffin at Orzak's three Botched Hill. So I guess my curiosity is what. Was the reason that they weren't approved? Because really, you know, as we all stated, you can't see anything. They're doing a fabulous job. Taking a piece of property and preserving it. You know, we all have that. I think no one wants to lose barns, myself included. So I don't understand what exactly in that. What what was the challenge? Like, why couldn't they be given a variance in the first place? What was the hang up on there?
The variance comes from the Z B A. And like Ken Slater mentioned, it requires a hardship. You have to prove a hardship. And as Ken Slater stated, it's almost impossible to go that route. We, our current regulations don't allow for the expansion of nonconforming barns. That's current regulations, no expansion.
I understand. It just seems strange if we're trying to save barns and you as you know, I have one that everyone wants to. It's a historic landmark, wants to see preserved. It's just it's just a curious oxymoron, I guess. And I understand what you're working toward.
Well, we've already addressed front setbacks in barns. We put a regulation in place last November. That any conforming portion, conforming portion of a barn can be used for any use you want. So if your barn is eighty feet long and the first ten feet is within the front setback, the other seventy feet you can do what you want with. We've adopted that one last fall.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. But I I am in some weird. I think they're, you know, they've done a beautiful job on the property and and you really can't see what they've. What they've done and it only really. You know, just improves the quality of town.
Okay. Wendy?
Yes, thank you.
I see you.
Okay, my name is Wendy Walker and I am here from as a representative from the Historic District Commission. The Carter's house and barn lie within the historic district and therefore. The historic commission has authority over all. They have to have a certificate of appropriateness in order to make any changes. And when we were presented with their bond. Amendment or change, we passed it right away without even having a hearing on it because it was in the back of the property. It was unseen. I then followed the process and it was rejected from the zoning and I went to the zoning board of appeals meeting. And I think the one thing that nobody mentioned is their dormer increased the cubic size of the barn and therefore. It increased the barn side itself. So therefore, it could not be accepted. I think that these amendments that the Carters have come up with addresses that situation in a way that hopefully would help other barns. addresses that situation in a way that hopefully would help other barns in the town to be used for a purpose today that it was not used for originally. Um, as a member of the historic district, we also, um, put a lot of effort and energy into this barn book listing every barn in Roxbury and how big they were and where they were. And we have tried to preserve them. And it's a very hard job because unless there's a purpose for the barn, nobody wants to put the money into it. And even in, within the last month, we lost two big barns and they, one might possibly be put back up again. And then another O'Brien barn is halfway to being taken down as we speak. And it's a very, I love working with the, uh, zoning commission to fine tune these, uh, amendments so that we can have a way to use these barns. So I'm all for, um, this proposal and its acceptance. And I think that it, it does indeed, um, do what the plan of development says is to try to keep Roxbury's rural character and agricultural history alive. So, um, we did send a letter along. Most of that, most of what I've just said is in that letter. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, it, can anyone hear me? Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt, but I'm on the phone, so you can't see me if, uh, I'm not on the Zoom call. My name is Jim Kelly and if I can, uh, say a few words now, or if someone is in front of me, I'll say them after that. It's up to you. No, go for it. Go. Okay, thanks. My name is Jim Kelly. I live at seventy-one Old Toford Road. And Lisa Hemrickson, my wife, um, wrote a letter, um, that you have there. Um, we love Roxbury, never more than so than in the last year or so. And we love it because of its rural character, obviously, and its people. Um, but what I like about this proposal is that it's, I think it's, it's very precisely drafted. So that we're very confident that in this passage will have zero detrimental impact. Um, and in fact, will encourage others to maintain and improve their historic barns, all in keeping with Roxbury's rural character. Um, I don't pretend to understand, uh, maybe some of the misunderstandings that occurred earlier. Um, but if you look at the bigger picture and looking forward, I remember attending the, really the last public meeting before the pandemic hit last, a year ago, last January in Town Hall, when we were discussing the ten-year program for Roxbury and how to, to ensure Roxbury's, uh, livelihood over the next ten years. Um, and making it appealing to all sorts of people and make it continue to be a thriving community. I feel that this amendment, uh, is very much in the spirit of the ten-year plan that we discussed, uh, uh, last January before, of course, the pandemic upended all our ten-year plans. So anyway, I just want to speak, uh, forcefully in strong favor of this amendment. Okay, thank you. Someone else?
Yes, Carrie Arshnot would like to speak.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I just, I wonder if, as you explained, or somebody explained that, um, the initial ruling was what sort of halted the project? And I wonder at this point, is, is there some way that this change can be retroactive to enable these modifications to this and ongoing projects? I mean, there's so much support here in the town for it and it's, it's, it's partially because of what Wendy just spoke of, about a barn preservation. And it's also because the Carters have been incredibly great citizens and have, you know, I, I'm on one church street right in the middle of town too. And, and the things they've done to improve their house, I only wish I could do to mine. But the building, you know, really preserving the, the integrity of such old property and old houses is to be applauded. And, and, and I think what Wendy spoke of, they increased the, um, space. And, and that's what I was talking about earlier. My comment is when I come down the hill, the space was a dormer, right? It's not really increasing the space necessarily. I mean, it is technically, but like you can't see it. It's a dormer. I can see maybe like the edge of it, probably like five inches of it on my run. And I just wonder if there's something that can be done at this point retroactively. I understand that the process that they went through, and I don't think they did it, um, egregiously or, or to, to sort of, um, go against any ruling. I think there was complicated matters, which I think Anna is going to talk about. But anyway, I wonder if now, at this point, instead of going backwards and just looking at everything that happened, if at this point we can decide something as a, a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, we'll continue. Is anyone else with questions or comments?
Jim?
Yes.
It's Anna Carter.
Yes.
I would like to speak to say a few things. One, I want to thank the zoning commission for all the work it does to protect this beautiful town that we love, we all love. I mean, I think there's a, you know, that's a very resounding sense tonight of, of the extraordinary, um, extraordinarily strong emotion people have for this town. And, um, you know, you've done, you and your commission have done an enormous amount to protect and preserve it. Uh, and we I'm frustrated for everyone appreciate what you do because I know I feel voluntary and, uh, and so thank you first of all for that. I'm, I'm also very touched by, uh, the support of our neighbors. You know, my husband and I moved to Roxbury fifteen years ago, actually sixteen years ago, and bought this beautiful house in the center of town. And we really have worked very hard to, um, you know, to, to preserve it and to, uh, to, to, to keep it looking as beautiful as we can, uh, and to, uh, restore the house as much as we can and, and to restore the barn. Um, we're very sorry that this misunderstanding happened. It, there was a confluence of reasons. We were stuck, um, outside the country during COVID last year. We had a, um, a sick family member. We had a lot of things that were distracting us, uh, and, and we, we were led to believe wrongly, as it turned out, that, that this wouldn't be a big issue if we were to put up this dormer because it was in the back of the barn where nobody could see it. Uh, and the last thing we wanted to do was to, to, you know, create an, an iso in the middle of town. We, we really, really want to preserve and, and protect the beautiful thing that we're lucky enough to own. So I just, I just wanted to say that. And, but I'm sorry that, that, you know, that we ran afoul of the regulations. I really hope that the commission can see fit to approve this amendment because it seems, it seems like it would be a very good thing for the preservation of all the bonds and lots we're going forward. So anyway, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. All right, if, um, does the commission have any questions? If not, and if.
Excuse me, Jim. This is Elaine Curly. I do have, um, a question about the proposed text. Um, I read through it a few times and I, I know that it's, it's quite wordy. Uh, and I, I'm just wondering, um, if it's been reviewed and if, if there's any question about it maybe being, um, abbreviated. Um, for example, uh, in the, I believe it's the second sentence, uh, the barn located within its existing, um, uh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I lost it. Um, yep. The barn located within its existing footprint can be made associated with conversion of some or all of the barn into habitable space or other permitted use. Can, can we say permitted use? Uh, can, is there, is that a consideration to possibly abbreviate the, uh, amendment a bit?
Uh, right at this point, um, Elaine, we have to act upon what was presented to us.
I see.
If we, the, due to the fact that it's a, an application for amendment written by the petitioner, we have to either accept or not accept what they gave us.
Thank you.
We're, um, and we'll discuss that further later in our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Jim, this is Kim Tester.
Yep.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I have a question. Is Gail McTaggart here?
I am.
Okay. So I had a question at the end where it says on the last sentence, "A complete site plan along with an affidavit shall be submitted stating that the portion of the structure located inside the setback shall remain unchanged." Does that mean, does that negate everything that's proposed in the change?
Um, I, actually I read it as you did to say that it negated it. And I think it needs to say except as set out above. But, um, there's, uh, also the word site plan is used in the Roxbury zoning regulations, uh, to set out a specific kind of application, which is, um, uh, more commercially oriented than residentially oriented. And so, uh, usually with residential properties, what is submitted might be architectural plans or, uh, A two surveys. But a, a site plan application has a different context under the Roxbury zoning regs. So I think what was meant here is that there would be, uh, a plan, a plot plan, architectural plan that's showing the improvements that are proposed. And if you will, I, um, the commission has the ability to make very minor changes to the petition that's submitted. Um, the limiting factor there is that people that read the petition before they, uh, decide whether to come to the hearing or not want to, want to know that if you were going to change it in some way to make it broad, more, more broad, to make it applicable beyond the words in that petition, that they would have said, I would have come to the hearing and complained if you had done that. So there's a, there's a due process argument that's, that's, uh, important for the petition. So minor changes could be made to clarify. And the commission could, when it, when it, uh, considers this, uh, think about doing, uh, some small changes to clarify what it means. Um, I agree, uh, absolutely agree that the last sentence, I think, uh, needs a couple of words stuck into it so that it, it doesn't undo, uh, the language of, that's been submitted.
Okay. The, I have one more question while we're at it. So when we wrote three, ten, seventeen in, in that first section on non-conforming barn area that's conforming, we put in habitable space thinking that people live in it. But with the non-conforming area, we specifically talked about the health and safety concerns of the building and it anywhere that's that close to the road, not wanting people to live in it, meaning sleep in it. And so the use of the habitable space in the new section is concerning. We don't have a definition in the regulation stating what habitable space means.
We're going to discuss in our regular meeting when we take this up as a commission.
Okay.
We're going to touch base on all of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with my question to Gail then, will you be there for the regular meeting?
I will be there. And, uh, just, uh, a general, uh, explanation about non-conformities. The general law in Connecticut is that non-conforming buildings should be brought to conformity as soon as the fair interest of the parties can be accommodated. Because everybody else that starts off has to comply with the regulations as they are now. And a non-conformity is something that was created and has a vested right to continue as it was. So this, we have state statutes that say that that vested right is to continue something exactly as it, as it, as it was. In, in Roxbury's regulations for non-conformities carry out that same statutory requirement. And which is how we, how everybody got here. So towns such as Roxbury can be more lenient. They, they can't be stricter, but they can be more lenient by making a regulation to do exactly what Roxbury's doing, doing with barns, where there's a good reason for it. There's other places where twenty-five percent expansion is allowed. So there has been some relief granted. The general rule in Connecticut and that our courts and Supreme Court have said is that non-conforming, non-conforming uses and non-conforming buildings, uh, can continue to exist exactly as they are, but not to increase or expand or extend. So Roxbury doesn't allow vertical expansions. Put a dormer on a building that's already completely within a setback and this building is within a setback. It's an, it's an increase. So what Roxbury has been doing is providing some more lenient provisions to carry out these very incentives that all of you are talking about. So just to explain that it wasn't the commission putting some harsh regulation together in Roxbury that looks different. Um, that's, uh, meant to make it difficult. Roxbury carries out pretty much what almost all the towns do in Connecticut for non-conformities. And in fact, has been providing more leniency and more exceptions that, to allow these kinds of positive changes. So I, I think that may answer a couple of the questions that some of the public made.
Thank you, Gail. All right, I think everyone's had opportunity to speak and ask questions. I believe it is time to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for.
Kevin, again, a point of information, attorney Neil Marcus. Since, does the applicant get a chance to rebut some of those comments, uh, uh, before you close?
Sure.
If I may, just for a moment, uh, it, it, when I say rebut, I, I, just to expand a little bit on what Gail McTaggart was just saying. Um, in, in the question that, uh, both, uh, Elaine and, and Kim, uh, had raised that that, uh, was the source of the explanations from Gail. The, when Ken and I were, were discussing the language of the petition that's before you, we realized that we were trying to basically, uh, shoehorn this section into the existing language of section three, ten, seventeen, which the commission had most recently, uh, uh, adopted. And in doing that, we've created some of the language difficulties that both Elaine and Kim and Gail, or all three of them have, have addressed. Uh, but the, the, if you look at the text amendment as proposed and go to the last line and it says that "a complete site plan along with an affidavit shall be submitted stating that the portion of the structure located inside the setback shall remain unchanged." The structure. What we're concerned about, of course, is whether structure in use are being, uh, mixed here because at the beginning of that paragraph, we talk about the fact that the conforming portion will be allowed to be converted into habitable space or other permissible uses. So we've, and Gail, I think, recognizes this from what I take from her comments. On the one hand, you start a regulation talking about use and then you finish it with structure. And that language can be amended during your review process because it doesn't change the purpose for which the original proposal was adopted or the purpose for which this amendment, uh, seeks to change the regulation. But it would address the inconsistency of the language itself. So I agree with what Kim, Elaine and, and Gail have said. But I suggested that you, you take that in context of the language that was in the reg to start with in the new li- language. And then somehow they have to be properly edited to, to, for lack of any other word. But the, the other thing you, you've got to keep in mind, the question is the use of the word habitable space or other permissible uses. Again, that word was in the regulation when, when Ken and I found it. I mean, that, we, we found that. I mean, that we, we found that regulation to use the word habitable space. There was some suggestion, I think from, maybe from Kim, that, that habitable means if people are going to be sleeping, you know, close to a road. But habitable is not necessarily sleeping space. Habitable space is occupied space, which means that it is usually has heat and light. And of course, sometimes water and plumbing. But habitable means that it's a space that, that, you know, a human being would want to spend time in. And whether they're spending time there, sleeping or writing their memoirs or playing pool, that's, it's habitable. So I would ask you, just as you give consideration to what Gail has, has advised you, because I agree with her advice. And that is that you can make minor text amendments that don't change the meaning of the purpose of the proposal. And to that effect, you could also, I believe, subject to Gail's approval or Gail's suggestion, if she agrees, I think that you can deal with the administration of the application as part of your review. Because right now, it does say a complete site plan, and I happen to agree with what she's, what Gail has said. And that is a site plan is, is a word of art in a zoning reg. And I'm not sure that people really need to give you a complete site plan. I think they have to give you a proposal, it's a plan for the building, but not necessarily an entire site plan. Which would go way beyond a small renovation. So I think you can deal with the administration of the application without changing its meaning at all. So again, I don't know that my comments are meant to really rebut in the sense that we disagree. But my comments would be that we would agree that, that the language can be modified without really changing the meaning of the proposal significantly. So we'd encourage you to do that. And I want to thank Gail for, for her comments. Thank you.
Yes, and I, I would join in with Attorney Marcus's point. We want to do as little amendment you'd recently adopted this section. So I did not want to interfere anymore than what was necessary to accomplish what we were trying to. And our expectation was is that if you read the two together, obviously you, you don't approve something and have the last sentence mean that you can't. And as Attorney Marcus said, that tied in with the structure in a way that you could comply with it. But I will, I will join Attorney McTaggart in questioning whether that sentence makes a lot of sense. Because you can deal with it as, as a matter of enforcement, you can require whatever documentation you want to show compliance. So that, that sentence, I don't think is necessary, but I didn't want to interfere with it. But Attorney McTaggart's suggestion to just add, except as otherwise approved or language like that, would certainly also accomplish leaving that in and clarifying any potential ambiguities between what we're proposing and what's already in that section. So we'd ask that you look favorably on our application and that, you know, in terms of, you know, zoning enforcement reports and such that you're going to get. This really isn't a zoning enforcement matter. Is it, is this a good idea for Roxbury? And I think the evidence tonight showed that it is and that the overwhelming support of the community speaks in favor of this as being a good policy for your, your commission to consider and adopt. And I want to thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you all. There again, with that being said, I believe we can entertain a motion to close public hearing.
This is Kim Tester. I motion that we close the public hearing.
And do I have a second?
This is Elaine Curley. I second the motion to close public hearing.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing the hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Everybody, any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Nothing can be added or no questions from this point on. Thank you all. All right, Julie, boy, you're popping them right up there, huh? Now we will commence our regular meeting. Monday, June 14th, 2021, 2021, at eight forty-five. Seating of members, we will see Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Jim Conway, Candy Berlari for Dave Miller, and Bill Horgan for Alan Johnson. Public comments, we have no one this evening for public comment. We need to approve the minutes of the April 12th meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at them?
I, I, Chris Kim, I did not see, you know, anything out of order there.
Okay. I read them through this afternoon. If everybody's good with the minutes, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve, or are you still reading?
This is Candy. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the April 12th meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
This is Elaine Curley. I will second approval of the April 12th meeting.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, item number four. Carter, Five Chalbys Road, petition to amend zoning regs, discussion following public hearing.
Okay, so this is Kim. I just like Gail's suggestion on how to fix the last sentence. Do we, do we take it out or?
Well, here's, let me just throw out, before we get started on this, I've read this numerous times. And I have more than one question or concern. This, this deals with a side setback currently, the way it's written. And I would rather not write a reg like this for a side setback. And I'll explain why, because if it was anything else but a corner lot, the side setback would be on the bounding property owner. The non-conforming barn could set right on the property line. And the neighbor's house could be 30 feet away. So then if we approve this type of reg, they can make changes to the barn that's 30 feet from someone's house. And to me, there's not enough buffer, the 30 feet in there, because it's a side setback. So with that, I'm not against this at all. But with that being said, on a corner lot, I would like to consider both street frontages, front setbacks. If it's a corner lot and it's got a road this way and a road that way, they're both fronts. So I'd like to work it into the amendment to where this is just for front lots, front lot setback. And that negates the side setback. That's one that I had. And habitable space, yes, very broad. Habitable can be an apartment, it can be a rec room, an office, a library. Habitable space is too broad because we don't want people sleeping and living and cooking in, in a non-conforming structure that's eight, 10 feet from the road. It's not a safe situation and zoning is all about safety. So use habitable space, but also throw in no cooking or sleeping. Allowed in the non-conforming portion. You can, you can do other stuff in the non-conforming portion, but you can't make an apartment out of it. I want to put that in. And, and of course, the last sentence definitely needs to come out. Because it's not even needed anymore. If we're allowing the non-conforming portion to be changed and used, you can just delete it. So number one, I wanted to refer to front setbacks. Which we already started with the front setback. This just takes what a corner lot and makes them both front. And what I would suggest at this time, what I would suggest is to deny this application to amend. And the commission will start immediately writing one that works and fits with what we already have. The other one question I had was size of the expansion. I would like to incorporate the same 25% of the footprint like we did for the houses. So you can't take a 20 by 40 barn and put a 2,000 square foot addition on it, even though it's going back. So we, we correct the habitation part, we limit the size to 25%. We consider it just for front setbacks, which you're already halfway there. I'm not saying I want to do this, I want to preserve barns too, but I think we can do a better job than what we have before us.
Jim, it's John Cody. Another point I think you want to touch if you're going to revise this reg or the approach to it, definition of a barn. Anything that formerly housed livestock. Here's an example, I have a little rental house, my tenant had ducks, she kept the ducks in there. Is my rental house a barn? That needs to be corrected.
I think.
Okay.
This is Kim. So on the definition, that's part of the change, correct?
Yes.
Something that they would have to propose to correct so we could accept it.
So doesn't that, does, doesn't that already include that?
No, they're adding in or formerly housed, which you can't prove anyway. I mean, I could say I had a giraffe in my kitchen, who's going to say I didn't?
Well, that's all the stuff that I think the commission should look at. And there again, I want to restate, we want to continue, we've already done non-conforming houses. We've already done non-conforming barns in the front setback. We will adjust this corner lot to where they're both front setbacks and then expand on what we've pretty much done. And make it so it fits. And I really want to stay away from referring to side setbacks for this type of changes. And anyone else?
Yeah, this is Kim. So I just, I'm just a little confused about the front setback and the side setback. So you're saying for a corner lot, each side would be considered front?
Yes. If there's a road, if there's a street, because this whole process, no one seemed to be able to determine which one was the front. And we came up with where the, where the primary door is, we came up with where, and what I've read in my regs, the shortest lot line is the front. So on a corner lot with two streets, they're both considered fronts.
And I think the important thing for people to remember, and I, I think it gets lost often, is that this isn't, when we make regulation changes or adopt new regulations, it's not for one piece of property.
Correct.
It'll work for everyone in town that could fall under it. And I think that gets lost sometimes and we try really hard, I, I hope everybody knows, to think in a very big picture format so that we don't let people, let properties fall through the cracks. I think that's, and it's difficult to do. So.
But I think, I think the commission, with our past record as far as working these things out. And believe me, we don't drag our feet, we move pretty quick on it. But I think the commission can sit down and write an excellent regulation that includes all non-conforming buildings, the front, you know, corner lots, and make them usable, but not make them unsafe for apartments. Stuff like that, still and all, you know, some of these barns that are perpendicular to the road. The rear portion, which is conforming and very safe to put an apartment in it. If it's 50 feet from the road, it's conforming, put the apartment in there. But when it's within the setback, you can, we're going to allow other activities, but not actual living. So I firmly believe that we as a commission can put something together that'll really be in the best interest of the whole town.
This is Kim. I have a question for Gail. So with the, with the things that Jim's bringing up and I'm assuming that those changes would be too big for making them tonight or extending this public hearing.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a decision you get to make and not me. But, okay, but that's all right. The, the changes would have to be of the kind that someone who thought you were going to make that change. If it was written in the, in the petition that you're considering, that would have said, gee, if I known you were going to vote that way. If you're going to add those words, I would have come to the hearing to speak. So you know, the, how corner lots are treated. And, and we're, we're, we're sort of, I think if I've added this up, I think there's four or five changes. One of them is the site plan that we talked about. The other is making sure that there's an exception that a non-conforming property, the only changes are the ones that are approved by this reg and the rest of its, the rest of the structure stays. What habitable means, that may be a clarification, that part of it could be a clarification, no cooking or sleeping. The, the, the bulk size of this worries me about as much as anything about how, if you're going to put a 25% limitation on it, does that make a difference? So when we get done, there's about four or five different changes that you're talking about. And I think, Jim, I think if the, the definition of corner, of a corner lot, having both fronts having to meet the requirements of being a, a front, a front setback for a corner lot would be perhaps an additional change to this and not included in this. Am I correct?
Yes, yeah.
So that take, that would take another amendment to, to carry that out rather than stuffing it somehow within the barn reg.
Yes. We could do them both, we could have them both done at the same time for the same public hearing.
You could, I mean, if, if you had a draft put together, you could have it taken up at your next hearing. You do have to refer it to planning again.
Yeah.
And it needs to go out, but it, you could, the commission could do it on its own motion and do it pretty efficiently. And get it, get the language exactly the, the way you'd like it.
It's got to fit the whole town, yes.
Yeah, the other thing about the negative recommendation from planning means you need four out of five votes in favor of this to pass it.
Correct.
Our state statute doesn't require you to give the reasons for a denial. You do have to give the reasons for an approval and you do need to consider the scheme of zoning. And you should consider the plan of conservation and development. So all of those are part of what's put into the, to the review of this. But it's, I think you could, you could make some of the small changes, you probably could have defined what habitable meant. I'm not sure you get all five of these changes without redoing it and putting a draft together that's worded correctly. And perhaps as Elaine, Elaine is saying, perhaps, perhaps with less words.
I agree.
Gail, it's John Cody. I have a simple question. Would it be easier if we attempted to make this permissible via special permit? Gail, it's John Cody, I have a simple question, would it be easier if we attempted to make this permissible via special permit?
If you made it by special permit, you would, it would require that there's a a public hearing on every application.
Which would be fantastic, wouldn't it?
Well, it's up to the commission whether it's the kind of thing that if we had some strict guidelines under zoning. You as zoning officer would know what those guidelines were. What zoning officers shouldn't be doing is making discretionary decisions. There should be bright lines in the regulations. And special permit does allow. It's still an administrative approval, but allows more discretion in determining compliance with the regulation.
By the commission itself, so.
By the commission itself, right.
Yeah, so each and each one, each barn or whatever, so-called barn, poolhouse.
But that's, yeah, that's a good discussion for the commission about whether it, whether the commission wants all of these to come to the commission. For review. Or whether there's or whether there's some or or whether some of these are the kind of thing where if we sit. If we draft it correctly, the zoning officer can know. Where the bright lines are and know whether to approve or disapprove.
Thank you.
All right. But it personally, I feel that the commission. At our next meeting, we'll take this up. Rewrite whether we go special permit or straight on. Next meeting, we get this all put together. And we can schedule a public hearing for whatever for August.
You have you have 65 days to make a decision. After you've closed your hearing on what's been presented, so you could decide it tonight or you could. You could think about it and you could go ahead and start with redrafting right away, as as Jim has said. And have it ready for an August meeting, it has to go to planning for referral and then to a public hearing.
Yep.
So that would be September when this came to fruition?
August.
No, the public hearing would be in August.
Yep.
Then.
15 days after the public hearing. Yeah, September, 15 days, 15 days after the public hearing.
And then our next meeting is what we we would approve.
At our next meeting, we would write the new regulation. To allow this.
Jim, you could have a, you could have a. A subcommittee work on a proposed regulation that you'd have ready for discussion at the next meeting.
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna offer to do that, so.
I believe step one, we can deny this tonight so we can get started fresh. There's just four or five different areas that we have to address. And tweaking it, one thing would have been fine. But two, but there's there's four anyway. That need to be addressed and we need to discuss. And the subcommittee can put something together, we can blow this through pretty quick.
This is Kim, I'm in favor of that and can writing. Like I did with the last one.
Right. Bill, what do you think?
Oh, for it, this is, this is a great opportunity, the 25%, if you rewrite rewrite these things, the 25% is very inviting. Defining habitable is very important and this is much more versatile, which applies the the whole town, not just to the Carter's. And as an addition that defining the the corner lot roads is also a great idea.
All right. I will myself personally make a motion to deny deny this application. We've motioned and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll get to work on this, I want everybody to be assured that we are going to put something together that works for everyone.
Great.
Thank you.
Good, very good.
All right, that brings us to item five. Dennis McDonald, Six Baker Road. There you go. Statement of use, that's the one that we don't want. There's another statement of use Karen says.
Yeah, it's an email he just sent.
Yeah.
Jim, Jim, it was sent late this afternoon in an email, so.
Right.
Someone would have to read it into the into the record.
Oh, boy.
Commission received it late this afternoon.
Yeah, it's dated today at 3:36 PM is when he sent it. Dennis McDonald. Do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay. From Dennis McDonald, sent Monday, June 14th, 2021, 3:36 PM. To Karen Eddie and Jim Conway, subject Six Baker Road, Roxbury, Connecticut. This is Candy Valeri, by the way. Statement of use, after clarification by the zoning commissions at the March 2021 meeting. I amend my prior use statement of March 18th, 2021 to reflect the commission's determination. Accessory building 40 by 60 feet will continue to have garage space on the entire ground level. The second level will contain one apartment with 1,680 square feet with a home office with 720 square feet. Main residence will remain 2,900 square feet of living space. The current 800 square feet garage under the house will be repurposed for a family room. A new addition will be attached to the west side of the current residence. This addition to the main residence will contain garages on the ground level. On the east side of the main residence, a new 12 by 21 square foot covered deck will be added. Connecting the current front porch and side patio.
Thank you. Okay. Everyone's, we've been through this for a few meetings. I believe Dennis is with us this evening, if anyone has any questions. I think we all know what's before us in the application. And. How do you feel?
This is Kim. Sorry, yeah, Kim. I'm sorry, I'm I'm on my phone, so can't, so, oh, I can't see. But. So my question is. Are all of the buildings connected to. Residents, one primary. Or is accessory building 40 by 60? Separate and then new garage, garage proposed attached to the house that primary unit.
Dennis, are you with us?
I certainly am.
Okay, maybe you can address that, how are you?
Just fine, thanks. They are not connected, the accessory building will remain accessory building. They are not connected and that's why I mentioned after your discussing that your determination made your. That that you made and I made and as to how you wanted to treat that with that enclosure or whatever on the three by six roof. They will be two separate structures.
How far away Dennis, Bill, how far away will the structures be, just very, very close? Looks like just a foot or two away on the site plan.
About six feet, Bill.
Six feet.
Dennis, did you ever get the existing deck that was in violation? Get that survey done so we could eliminate that problem or is we still have to wait, wait to survey on that?
It's done.
Well, we need the survey to verify that, correct?
I believe that you certainly have a, we'll get a survey to verify that, you know, Roy has done that. I don't know where it is at this point, I thought he was going to send it to you, but you certainly know that because of course he came out and measured it.
No, actually, we don't, the survey has shows it's in violation. But that's something I think we definitely need to have addressed before we even think about approving this. And let alone the wetlands issue, has that been resolved?
John, it has not been resolved and I don't understand why you're in the middle of this, asking these questions, number one about wetlands. As far as wetlands are concerned, they don't have anything to do with zoning, okay, if you read Gail's letter that she sent out last Friday. John, John, wait. John, okay, are you the wetlands enforcement officer now or are you the zoning officer? Decide which hat you want to wear, okay, and then stay with it.
I'm both, and I'll speak as far as zoning, sir.
As far as the zoning is concerned, John.
I'm sorry, just let me one one sentence, please. 3.7 wetlands, no structure shall be built on a wetland or stream belt area in Roxbury. Unless the necessary permit has been issued by the ILWC, that's 3.7 of our regs.
Yes, John, I would just refer that to the chairman of the zoning commission to to discuss that with you. Okay, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you, I don't understand why you're in the middle of this and and creating such a stir. Okay, the other point is is that you personally came out and measured that deck. Because I cut it off for you at your insistence and you released the cease and desist order, so consequently.
No, I'm sorry, you were speaking, you threw me off that property, I'm not allowed to go on there, I'd be arrested, according to you.
But, um. John, I never said any such thing, John, okay.
All right, guys, let's let's stick to what we have at hand before us, the application. For a covered patio. In addition to the existing house used as a garage and storage. And an accessory apartment within accessory building, it's all pre-approved, buildings built. So we have the apartment, an addition and a roof over patio.
So this is Kim, the the apartment. Proposal 1,680 square feet does fit with the. Appropriate requirements for an outside of. I know there was some about office, but. I think it's important that to know. By approving an office does not mean that the mission is. A. Enterprise. That you'll use.
Correct, that that's that's correct, Kim, I believe that the statement you say is it was a home office.
Yes, I just want to make sure it's clear that that's fully separate from. Any information or any. Application going for enterprise, that's just separate.
Right, it is, it is not anything commercial at all, thank you.
Andy?
For who?
I don't think it, I don't think that's up to the commission to make that determination because I have a home office as well and because I have. But I think. That's not, that's something that has to come before.
Sorry, Kim, but you're breaking up.
Hey, Jim, Bill, I gotta, I gotta say a couple of things here, someone's got to say it. First of all, Septic and Wetlands, that's addressed 3.6 and 3.7, that's addressed by 1812. Permits don't have to be in place for us for zoning to prove anything. But it's up to the responsibility of the person taking out, they have to get permits before they can do anything. Accessory building and accessory use, they're already defined and in accessory use. Incidental is a word used, incidental means accompanying but not a major part of something. So which kind of leads you to believe that an incidental accessory building should be not as major as the. Existing building and I guess the house was first the existing building, but these are all things that are kind of on a checklist. We just have to address these things and be comfortable with what these things mean, but. What I want to say is this, and this is more than just my opinion, but I feel it needs to be said. The site is highly visible and it's a major entrance exit slash gateway to Roxbury. And the commission's role is to assure conformity to all the regulations. All the regulations lurking in which is section 7.3.4. And that has to do with, it's only a short thing, it has to do with a highly quality of building design, neighborhood appearance and overall site design. At least the following aspects of the site plan shall be evaluated to determine the conformity of the site to its standard. The design in harmony of existing and or proposed neighborhood appearance as shown by the exterior appearance of the building. Or location on a site, the relationship to natural terrain, so 7.3.4. The end result of this proposed application. Really, the end result of this proposed application is a proposed structures. Of this application is basically a the homeless, really. Of a building. Even though there's a little space, it's going to be a very, very big building. Especially relative to the site. But it's going to be visible to all because it's the entrance and exit to Roxbury. 7.3.4. Must consider property values of the neighbors, as it says in 7.3.4. The neighbors being the Zimmerman Farm with the Ed Show Farm. I grew up down here, Mercer Mayor's House, Jay Dersel's former house. The De Vries look right down on this, right on the corner, on the east corner of 199 and. 67 is that nice house with this this nicely renovated barn with trees in front of it. This this. This big building is going to be totally visible to all of these. And we have to make a decision tonight or whenever we do it, it will impact each of these. And my my little side comment, which is something that perplexes me all the time. We have to make this decision with a very paltry, almost cartoonish set of plans that change all the time and confuse me. So I'm sorry I had to say all that, but I did.
All right. Anyone else this time? Because we have to say yea or nay tonight, we're down to the 65 days. And. You have to have a reference as far as denial, refer to a specific reg. As far as denial. Or approval, however. So. We have Bill, Candy, Kim, myself and Elaine.
Yeah, Jim, can I say something and to in response to Bill's comment?
Sure.
Thank you, I certainly understand your comment, Bill. You know, the the properties that are there, both on the corner of 199 immediately next to me. You know, it it's very difficult to see those those homes there. Pretty much over six months of the year, you don't even know that they're there, they're behind the screened tree wall that's there. But going back to the point about the the cartoonish building, okay? I certainly don't consider that the red barn that was built there to be cartoonish at all. Quite a nice, nicely built structure. With, you know, a lot of architectural amenities to it.
Dennis, I was talking about the plans that had that are before us.
No, I understand. I understand and and Bill, all I really wanted to say is is that what you get in a plan and what you what you needed to look at is is that the finished result. And so what I built there, I guess maybe two years ago or so. Certainly is a very adequate and very nice handsome structure, okay? I would expect that the, I can assure you that the same type of consideration will be given to the. The addition that's going on to the house and one of. And one of the reasons why I'm actually wrapping the porch onto the east side is, is to give the house some breadth on the, the street, because it looks so very tiny right now. It's very tall, but it's it doesn't have any width to it and girth. So consequently, I believe that those things will be taken care of, and I think you'll be quite satisfied. And I think you'll find that when the project is complete, it will look very nice, just like the red barn does right now. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
I would just like to bring one thing up, a point very brief. The estimated square footage for storage would be approximately six thousand three hundred square feet, according to the plans that he submitted. Again, our largest building in the business district maxes out at five thousand square feet.
Well, John, I don't know that that is in fact correct, because of course the, one of the things that I have to provide is I have to provide parking and such for the for the accessory apartment that's going in the barn, and so I don't know that you consider that to be storage space at that point, so. And as far as the existing storage space in the house, I think I would define that as being made into a recreational space in the lower level. So I don't know exactly what those numbers are, but certainly, you know, those two things should be considered when you're talking about the total amount of square footage.
That number just came off the plans you submitted, but that's all, thank you.
All right. We've seen it. And it's time to make a decision.
Jim?
Yep.
Hi, could I, could I just say something about the definition of accessory building? I mean, the commission should look at that as you're approving this. And I think, I think if you'll give me a second, I'll read it.
Sure.
Yeah, it's twenty point six. Accessory building is a building that is clearly subordinate and smaller in ground area and volume than the principal structure on the property, except in connection with agricultural use. In order to assist in the interpretation of its definition, trailers, cargo containers, crates, railroad cars, and the like are not customarily incidental to structures and uses. The first sentence is what's important there. If, there are two parts of that, and our courts have interpreted both that, both what the word subordinate means, and subordinate means what this says, is less than volume and principal structure. I think the commission needs to pay attention to that, because it's a requirement that if it's an accessory structure, that it meet that requirement.
The, the accessory, Gail, is already there.
It's there, but the, the accessory structure, except for used, the way it's used, if it's, I guess if he's not connecting it, perhaps the existing structure is the same, and the lower level is gonna be still used as a barn, I mean, as a garage.
Correct, but I mean, we're dealing with what's going in the accessory that's already been approved and built. So I can't really do much about the subordinate issue, because it's already done.
I, I hear you, okay.
That was originally taken out as a barn through wetlands.
So if, this is Kim, if I can clarify, so the addition to the house becoming part of the primary residence, is that correct? Is how people are doing that? So it increases the size of the primary residence, which makes current accessory building subordinate in size to the primary.
Yeah, hi, it's Candy, just a question. Dennis, as concerns, and the last time I saw this, I had many questions, but now the accessory building that's already there. Your email indicates that you will have sixteen hundred and eighty square feet as an apartment. And then on top of that, you're going to have a seven hundred and twenty square foot home office. So that makes twenty-four, twenty-five hundred square feet. And the existing house is going to have a square footage of twenty-nine hundred.
Correct, they'll have twenty-nine hundred square foot house, that is correct, yes.
Okay, and if we're looking at a building forty by sixty, the rest of the space will be used for what?
The rest of space on, where's that? I mean, on the, the new garage, or the new building that's being attached to the house?
Okay, well, the building is two-story, and it's about forty-eight hundred square feet, correct?
Oh, are you, are you talking about the accessory building?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, the accessory building.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about forty-eight hundred square feet, and we've accounted for twenty-five hundred. So what is the remainder of that space to be used for?
Well, it has a footprint of twenty-four hundred square feet. There's a ground level, which is, which is all garage area.
Okay.
And then the second level is where the habitable space is, and that is again another twenty-four hundred square feet.
Okay.
So it's not forty-eight hundred square feet of, of habitable space, but you know, whatever you want to call it. You make the determination on, I don't.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's okay, I just, I was, I was somewhat confused.
Sure, sure.
This is Bill, doesn't one of the, doesn't one of the buildings have to be eighteen hundred feet or smaller?
No, it's the apartment.
They can flip-flop, can they not?
We allow eight hundred square feet to be used as an apartment, up to eighteen hundred. Apartment or freestanding house.
Yeah.
So one of the two buildings has to be under eighteen hundred feet.
The apartment is sixteen eighty.
Sixteen eighty.
Okay, that's in the big barn.
Yes.
So the size of the big barn doesn't determine, it's the size of the apartment in a structure that determines the accessory apartment.
Correct. The barn's already built, as big as it's there.
Yeah, and that's bigger than the house, so if the two just stayed there, the house could become the accessory building, and the barn could become the primary one. But now the house is getting an addition on it, so it's becoming more than eighteen hundred, and the barn is already more than eighteen hundred.
Right. But.
Neither one of them are accessory buildings. One of them's not, one of them's not right.
I believe what, the way we wrote that accessory apartment was, we changed it to go up to eighteen hundred square feet for accessory apartment or accessory house.
In which they've both been exceeded, no?
No, Bill, the, the building does not, it didn't limit the size of an accessory building.
The houses, the existing house that's there now is, will be twenty-nine hundred square feet, okay?
So that's over, that's over eighteen hundred.
Right, and then the.
And then the, the big, the big, the big red barn is how many square feet?
There's gonna be a seventeen hundred and twenty square foot apartment in it, which is under the eighteen hundred square feet, which I believe is what, what everyone else is talking about, is that eighteen hundred square foot limit. So it doesn't exceed that eighteen hundred square foot limit.
Right.
In an accessory building, so.
It's an accessory apartment in a big building, seventeen twenty. And the house is twenty-one hundred. I'm just, I'm not wrapping my brain around that, I don't, I don't quite get it, but.
Although, Bill, there'll be, there'll be another eight hundred square feet downstairs, because the garage area that's downstairs will be made into, you know, a recreation room. That's the purpose of it, and then you'll have the straight-in garage from the front that loads from the front is being built to, to replace that space, replace that garage space.
I would just like to remind the commission that we have no plans of this, since the revised state and views came in, as far as the layout for these apartments and rec rooms.
You, you do have the plans for the area over the garage. They're in the package.
You just changed from two apartments and an office to one apartment and office.
I never changed. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I see. The ones I got is an apartment and an office.
Julie, can you move that, see it, I think it was. So that we can see the detail of accessory, no?
Too fast.
Keep going. Keep going.
Oh, right there. Is it possible, might be my screen, can you move over a little, or? Oh, that's better. Thank you. So in this plan, there's now three baths. Last month, or in April, there was only one bath. Yeah, I'm not okay with this.
This is Bill, so we have three buildings now, all of which have habitable space. Is that correct?
Yeah, they all, they all.
They all have habitable space.
Correct, they all have.
One of is an apartment, one is a house, but the pool barn has habitable space also.
The pool barn has no habitable space in it, no.
What about the pool table in this?
This isn't the pool barn.
Oh, this is the big barn, the red barn.
Yeah, the big red barn, yeah.
All right, and the pole barn doesn't have any habitable space, no offices, no nothing in it, correct?
Nope, no, it does not.
The pole barn is just all storage, doesn't have any habitable space in it.
None. If you, and, and if you look at the site plan that has been consistently shown to all the commissions, that was approved by the Newtown Health District, it specifically outlines that, even in, in various colors that the sanitarian used, as a matter of fact, he, he actually wrote in front of the three things that were on the application. One was the, the new covered deck that he shows on the east side. The other one was the new pole barn, says no habitable space on it. And then it says on the, by the existing accessory building, it says existing building connected to habitable space with two potential bedrooms. And that was signed off by the sanitarian, and it's been in the file, in the Roxbury Land Use File since July, and it's certainly been included in, in all the packages that I think that I've seen, but I could be wrong on that, so. I didn't look through absolutely every one, but it's certainly been a standard for me. And, and because that's where I start on all these projects, and you've really got nothing going for you until you get the sanitarian to agree with what you can do. He's the first step.
Okay, so by definition, the old, the original house in the pole barn are one.
Original house and the pole barn are, are one unit, that's correct, Bill, yes.
Okay, because they're connected by a walkway, which is a legitimate structure.
No, they're, they're not, no walkway, Bill.
It says a walkway with roof, doesn't it?
That's.
Now that.
Big.
He changed.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the six feet you talked about not existing, Dennis?
That's right, that's right.
So that walkway is. That roof is coming out.
I, exactly, yes. Be, be, so, so there's two separate structures there, and the pole barn is attached to the, is gonna be attached to the side of the existing house.
Yes, and that becomes one building.
That's correct.
That becomes one building. Technically, the walkway with the roof makes it all one building, so that, that walkway with the roof is the little bitty fly in the wind, as it makes it all one big building, but remove that, and it's two buildings.
Correct.
Dennis, was the, was the original accessory building approved as a barn or a garage, or what was it?
It was never, they told me not, that they would not, it was not supposed to be called a barn, because a barn had a, had a different meaning to them, and they said, you always must call it an accessory building, so that's what it's always been called.
I can answer that clearly. When he applied to wetlands, the application was for a barn. When he applied to zoning, it was for a garage.
I don't want any discussion about. Jim, why are we having a discussion about, you know, wetlands? This is a zoning operation here that we're having. Can we stay on point here? Every time we, we get on to this, we, we get sidelined on something. We're talking about zoning, and, and so, you know, if you go back and you look, no, let's, let's go back and look at the, the, the permits that were handed out. If you go back and you look at the building permit that was handed out by John, okay, the building inspector, it says specifically accessory building on it, it does not say barn. If that answers your question, I hope it does.
All right. We've been here. I think everybody can see what's before you. And I would like to know how you all feel. It's a simple approval or denial. So I'll like to start with Elaine.
Elaine, this is Elaine Curly, and I would be inclined to deny this. I believe that Gail, I'd like to confirm that Gail said, I don't need a reason to deny, I need a reason when I.
That's, you're, you're on the wrong page.
Not, not, not for a zoning permit, that's only, that's only, yeah, that's when you're acting legislatively on a regulation.
Thank you, okay, well, I'd be apt to deny it, because I'm absolutely not clear on what the intentions are here, and I would need more time to review.
Candy?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself, yes. I'm not, I, I vote to deny. I'm not as confused as I was last time, it's a little clearer, but I still have so many questions, it's unbelievable. You know, the accessory building. I, I understand about the, the size of the apartment, that's clear. Three bathrooms in this building, I mean, too many questions.
Kim?
Sorry. I think I have had a lot of my questions answered, and I want to, I don't think I can have an opinion based on aesthetic, so I'm. But I would and I could hear myself talking. I would be tempted to approve with the pole barn, had a barn that is in addition to a structure making that be much building, and then the accessory, making it more in line as an structure to the primary. I had my questions about the accessory apartment does fit with the eighteen hundred square foot. You know, down to sixty. And I have no problem with two bathrooms, because of, that size can, and there is one that they used to own. And and I think that's it.
And so let me just firm it up, because I had a hard time hearing. And so let me just firm it up, because I had a hard time hearing you. So you vote to approve? Okay. Bill, what do you think?
I still have a lot of questions, but that's not the reason I decide, I decided to deny it. I deny it because of seven point three point four, and the five basically majestic neighbors around there who are going to be looking on this building, as beautiful as it is, it's still just not the rural Roxbury. And so there are five neighbors and one applicant, so the score is five to one. So I'm denying it in favor of seven point three point four.
All right, I, I vote to approve. I have no questions. It's quite clear to me. It is very large, but the one building's already there. And so I'm, I vote to approve. We had three denials and two approvals. So with that being said, Dennis, it appears that it's denied, and you could go to ZBA. Because any decision we make can be, go to the ZBA. Okay. All right, folks, we're gonna continue on.
Jim, I have one question, it's Karen, do we need a motion to deny or no?
Gail's here.
Yeah, I, I, Jim, I would prefer that you would do, do, do a, a formal motion and just do a vote, and I know people have given their reasons, but that you'd do a formal motion and a vote.
Okay.
Usually you do a positive motion, and then people vote against it if they want to deny it.
Right, I'm, that's what I was, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the application of Six Baker Road. Do I have a second?
Uh, sorry.
Motioned and seconded?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Kim.
Kim, okay. Thank you.
Opposed? Any I made a motion to approve.
Oh, Candy opposed?
Approve the, approve the vote, you said?
Approve the application, we have, do it by a motion.
To approve the application, but not accept the application?
I moved to approve, then you folks come in and, and.
Oppose it, yeah.
Oppose it.
Okay.
Say no.
No, I oppose it, no.
Okay. Gail, or Elaine? Elaine?
You're on mute, Elaine.
Like Elaine, no?
Okay. Motion was made and did not pass. All right. Item six on our agenda this evening, the Roxbury Animal Clinic has a request to modify its special permit. And there it is before you, did you folks see this on the emails?
No.
I believe what I've read and what I've heard is they want to change the use in the, the other house, the, the house, the Stewart's house. While they're building the structure, they want to use that as a examination area room in the bigger house, not the little house.
Actually, Jim, I know a little bit about this, I can pipe in if you don't mind.
I'm here too.
Oh, Crystal's here.
Okay, there you go.
I'm here. Yeah. So, um, yes, this was approved, I think, back in April. Um, we just weren't very specific about the use of the existing residence on the property. We were just keeping it as is, and now we've kind of developed the uses, and in the interim, while they're building the large structure, they need some additional office because they're in that small building at one fifty-six Baker, so. Um, we're just clarifying the use of the residence to be an apartment in the front part of the original house, and then just a meeting space and office space in the back portion of the building, and they'll be separated by a two-hour fire separation per building code. So if you go to the site plan, it's just a much clearer diagram of the use on the property, which is all business for the Roxbury Animal Clinic that was previously approved. And then if you scroll over to the house where the red rectangle is.
There you go.
Front part of the house being still a residential apartment, and the back portion being the same business use as the rest of the property.
Uh, this is. I'm sorry, this is Kim, but that then stay after, well?
Yes, it will remain this way indefinitely.
Okay, because you said temporary.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, they're doing it before the rest of the, the project, so it kind of jumped in terms of a timing.
So Crystal, this is Elaine Curly, I, I identify that as the gambrel roof barn attachment that is currently on the back of the house, is that what we're referring to?
Yes, and then the little one-story space between the original house and the gambrel portion, there's a little addition from a while ago.
So you're just changing, you're not changing anything really, are you?
No, we're just changing, we're just.
Just temporary, just temporary use change.
It's a, well, it's a permanent use change, to be more of a mixed-use building than a fully residential.
So the temporary use will become a permanent use.
And we felt that this could be done just by changing the statement of use for the special permit, instead of going through a whole nother public hearing, because the first public hearing, there was nobody contesting any of this, everybody, in fact, I don't know if anybody really spoke. And the whole complex, it's not changing much of anything, it's just kind of moving things around. So with a revised statement of use, I think the commission can just accept this, approve this.
Looks fine to me.
Good to me. Um, sure, motion to approve. Accept.
Go ahead.
I'm good with it.
Seconded.
Okay.
All in favor?
Who moved to approve, who seconded, I didn't hear.
Uh, Candy.
Candy did. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think you guys are good to go.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jim, who made the motion, I didn't catch that either.
Uh, Elaine made the motion.
No, no, I didn't.
You did.
I did, and you seconded, okay.
So Jim, you made the motion, Candy seconded.
Yeah.
And it was a unanimous vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, that leads us to John, CEO report.
Okay, um, I'll just run through this, I've had some complaints about signs. So that was one thing, Zone D had to run around there, collect all the signs on the greens, on the sides of the roads. So please, if anyone sees any and they'd want to grab it for me, that'd be fantastic, or just let me, I'll run out.
What type of signs, what, were they?
You name it, I mean, the, the typical tag styles to.
Oh, yeah.
Little, um, stores, a CBD store that's coming to the middle for, in case anyone wants. It's the season, people stick them out, and we just, you know, we gotta police it a little bit, which is, it's mine, no big deal. Um, a little bigger topic on hand was, I had a Zoom meeting with DEEP, the Department of Environmental Protection. We had the commissioner there, the Attorney General's Office, several other people discussing Fran Hodge and his continuation of violating our ordinances and laws and everything. Um, to summarize that, it went terrible. DEEP is not acting well, Fran has five violations since the court order came out. Uh, they refuse to enforce the rules, uh, each inspection by Gene McGillis was conclusive. Fran is continually operating a legal transfer station. Um, doesn't mean I'm gonna quit, I'm gonna keep pursuing this till we do get something done, because wrong is wrong. Um, but there's the update on that. Uh, the next thing we're.
So I ask you a question, or should I wait till the end?
No, no, please jump in, I'm sorry, I'm just running, making this fast, go ahead.
So what, um, is there anything that, as the zoning commission, we can do about that, or?
No, not really, this is a town ordinance thing. Um, the best way to handle this is have the state do their job, because they're violating several state laws, and we don't have the teeth or the bite to do anything about that. You know, the state could shut them down like that, HRA was involved in, in the conference call. They're seeing what they can do, I mean, we're, as far as zoning, we've done everything we possibly can, and then some, we're just, but you know, we just keep fighting, you know, just can't stop because it's wrong.
Why won't the state do something?
Excellent question.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I, I love, because, uh, here's an example, when Attorney General Michael Lynch said that he's not gonna prosecute someone for a piece of cardboard that's frozen to the ground, I had to correct him, say that, Michael, you're wrong, it wasn't a piece of cardboard, it was seven containers full of waste. Um, they downplay everything. When Franny went to court the initial time, the Attorney General said he was in diligent compliance. That's why he had fourteen NOVs, none of them were right. They refuse to do their job, it, it's sad, but it's true.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, it's terrible, if you, give me a call, I mean, I've got boxes of this stuff, I mean, you name it, pictures, all that great stuff, but yeah, anyone who wants to give me a shout, I got it all there. Uh, next topic is an outstanding NOV on the Carter situation. As we all know, they've got a, they came to zoning for a permit, were denied, they went to ZBA, they were denied. They decided to come, to start construction on their own with no building, no zoning, no health, no permits whatsoever. New Year's Eve, I was informed of this and issued the cease and desist order. Attorney Slater later on came back and admitted that they were wrong. They would amend this by putting the roof back and doing such, he sent me an email, that's all documented as well. Materials were delivered. Uh, April fifteenth was the window for this to be done, it never happened. Right before that, Attorney Marcus joined, joined the party, and he responded how they wanted to get their way, and if not, they would do the eight thirty G affordable housing. Um, my opinion, fantastic, do that. Roxbury wins, they get what they want. Um, that hasn't happened, so now we still have this NOV that needs to be addressed. What I'm asking the commission to do is make a decision, are you going to stand by a regs, Wetlands did, we had a violation there where the person was a cease and desist, they went back, they did it. They find the contractor, and they put in a remediation plan. We have a very similar situation here. They, they were denied, they did it blatantly anyway. The commission needs to decide whether they want to fight this or just roll over. Um, I have my opinion, hopefully you have the same one, so that is.
John, may I ask?
Oh, please, please.
Um, okay, so just to be clear on this, because they haven't gone over there, they began construction.
Correct.
They stopped construction, they did not remove construction.
Correct, uh, Attorney Slater, we have the emails, they bought the materials, they agreed to take it down because they were wrong. So we were. They revoked on that, they came back and they said, you know what, we want to do our thing, and if we don't, we were more than happy to go with the eight thirty G affordable housing. And as it stands right now, they're in violation, this needs to be addressed.
Um, so this is Kim.
Yep.
I don't remember any time that a meeting on zoning where I was involved in to decision on remediation. So I don't know, I don't know what the protocol is.
Well, we didn't, that would have came up, because they had, according with Gail, we had a verbal agreement, it's all documented in the emails. They had an agreement till April fifteenth, to rectify this, April thirteenth, Attorney Neil Marcus sent us an email going in a different direction. The last month, that would have been brought up in the May meeting, that was canceled, so that's why this is a big catch-up all of a sudden.
But I mean, our next step, you know.
Our next step is simple, I've, I've contacted the state, they're more than willing to bring this up, to, to bring it to court. Um, we don't have to go that way, I've talked to Gail, and Gail has the, the power and the authority, with your blessing, to do this on her own. Seems like a viable option to do, and it's certainly our prerogative. So I'm asking the commission if they're going to act on the NOV or?
So, so just, just to make it clear to me, uh, if we act on the NOV, that would compel them to take down the existing a- aspect of development.
Um, I can't say that, because now you're, we're handing it off to the court system, and as you know, Elaine, that could go any which way, they may decide you nothing.
But in the meantime, John, if, by the time the courts get to it, if we have approved this new amendment, where does it put them?
Um, where would that put the commission?
No, where would it put the, with the Carters? If we approve the amendment next month.
Well, let's look at this the right way, the NOV was issued New Year's Eve. This is first, chicken before the egg. I believe we have to act on this, if we don't, then you're negligent in your duties, but we can't not do anything. That's your decision of whether you're not gonna do something, but it's up to you guys.
Yeah, uh, this is Candy, just, just a question, I, I think one thing that concerned me was a statement that was made that the dormer increased the size of the barn in the non-conforming area.
Yeah, so what the ZBA denied.
Yeah, and, and that, that to me is totally wrong.
I agree. We also agree with that, they, they were told no, and they did it anyway.
Yeah, yeah, that, 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 that's egregious, I mean, that, that's very, very upsetting. Had they done something that didn't increase the size, or you know, something else, I, I don't think I'd be as concerned, but.
Well, when I, when I came in for the application, I talked to the contractors, and I said, I could give you everything inside. I don't have an issue, like, it's not a change of use, it's a pool house slash office, whatever it may be. They didn't like that, they went to ZBA, they got denied and decided that Roxbury doesn't matter as residence.
But again, it, it didn't increase the footprint, it increased the, the size based on the projection of the dormer.
Well, see, the way I like to look at this, it's not the size of the dormer, I mean, that's a small thing, that's bad. The bad thing is the blatant disregard for our regulations for the zoning commission, the building department, the ZBA, the Newtown Health. For our, and for you.
Right.
John, this is Bill, what, what's, what would be the penalty?
That would be up to the courts, but they could easily come back and do what Slater said, put it back the way it was. Then, then everything's clean, we have a clean slate, and there's nothing to do, I mean, then they're right, they did the right thing, they listened to you, but that's up to them and up to you.
Okay.
I think we're thinking.
I know, it's a sticker. Kind of have to do the right thing.
Well, um, if, if the new reg or the, the new language to the existing reg is worded properly, couldn't that compel them or require that they remove the dormer, that nothing be done? Such as adding a dorm.
The regulation change has nothing to do with this, we are looking at the enforcement issue of them violating the refusal to do it and doing it anyway, that needs to be addressed, that is the sole purpose of my CEO, the enforcement aspect of this report.
Well, I, I, while I understand this, John, unfortunately, they're not the first people in town to do such a thing.
To, well, no, you're right, because there was.
We've had other people pull this. We've had other people pull this stuff.
Remember the pool had to be backfilled because they put it in the wrong spot and decided to do it anyway. And that was corrected by removing the pool.
And when you spoke with Gail, John, and her opinion was she will
This, we don't have to go through the state. We can. I've talked to him. Um, he was willing to take it on. And Gail said that she's capable of handling the paperwork. Then again, the Carters could do the right thing. But either which way, I think we need to get the ball rolling.
So when Gail handles the paperwork, meaning to remediate?
Uh, no, I think that's out of the plan unless they come back with the right, right answer. But what we would do is initiate the court, court proceedings.
So Gail wouldn't be any part of it?
No, no, Gail would be part of that for initiating the court proceedings, just filing the paperwork and et cetera like that. Um, I'm sure if this was resolved, zoning commission could pull. I have no doubt that they could pull the, our application or, um, our paperwork on that. If it was resolved, but as it stands right now, they're in violation.
I'm assuming Gail's not here.
No, but I could talk to her in the morning and, and
The resolve is putting it back to where it was.
Yeah, like they agreed to. They agreed to do that. Attorney Slater did. We have the emails.
And they're thinking, put it back to where it was. And two weeks later, they opened up and we have a new regulations. That's what they're, that's probably what they're thinking.
Well, that's
I agree. I agree. I'm sure that's what they're thinking.
Exactly. Or they can do the, the affordable housing, eight thirty G. That's what they wanted. I, I think that's a fantastic idea. That helps the town, that helps everyone. It gives them what they want. So then decide. So right now, we have to look at, do we initiate with Gail? To try and put this NOV behind us or are we going to ignore it?
I'll agree with whatever Gail agrees to.
I, I think, I think we should, we should, uh, enforce it. I, I think we should compel them to, you know, to go to comply with what they agree.
I, I agree with that too.
Yeah.
I'm inclined to agree, especially because of the watchful eyes on this case. And the precedent it might set if we don't enforce.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with you. That's true.
Yeah. And, and, but the other thing is, is I was trying to, to, I guess, state earlier, if we're careful with the drafting of the regulation, we don't allow them to put a dormer. We don't allow them to increase the size of the non-conforming portion of the barn. They can use it for whatever they want. Or is that the wrong way to look at this?
Uh, that's wrong. We don't even wanna talk about the regulation change because that is not part of this. Which, I mean, regulation change could benefit a lot more people than just them, but that is not for discussion. We're just have to focus on the NOV that happened on New Year's Eve.
Okay. Let's go for it. I mean, that's my vote.
I think because they already agreed and that they even got the wood for it too.
That was, thank you for saying that. That was something special, wasn't it?
Yeah. I, I think that's important. I do agree. It sets a precedent.
Yeah.
That's right. We can't, we can't let it go.
Yeah, and people, I think regulation change and the, um, violation. Couple of months ago, to try and fix things and I
I would like to make the suggestion that, um, we actually, um, chart our actions under previous cease and desist orders and the outcomes. So that it is recognized that they aren't the first people and that they won't be the last.
All right.
We, we vote on this right now?
Yeah. Yeah. Somebody can make a motion to enforce?
Uh, this is Kim. I'll make a motion for the, um, what am I making a motion?
NOV.
Carter and, uh, putting the, uh, barn, uh, dormer and removing it and putting it back to
Do I have a second?
Elaine will second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd like to thank you all. I'll, I'll keep everyone posted.
All right, uh, chairman's report. I really have nothing. Uh, Kim, as far as working on that reg, you want to, um, put stuff together using, yeah, what we had, what they have and call anytime, but you know my primary concerns and, uh, see how it comes out, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put up, I'll draw a right draft, uh, based on my notes and then, um, you can kinda take a look and make sure I've, I've addressed everything.
Okay. All right, uh, communications. I don't believe, Karen, I don't believe we have any.
You're correct. We do not.
Okay. So with that being said, I will, unless someone else has anything else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would, I have one question. Does anybody have an update on what's happening with the, um, committees for the, um, exploration of housing trust? Any information?
We're, uh, having a Zoom meeting tomorrow night. Um, Peter Philos, myself, Barbara and Jocelyn.
Just that or anybody?
That's for the, far as I know, Jocelyn put it together to, she's gonna try to explain to us how, what we need to do to form a, get a group going.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Uh, this is Kim. I motion that we adjourn.
Do I get a second?
This is Elaine. I'll move to a second, yeah.
Very good. All in favor? All right, thank you very much. Well done.
Good luck to Dave Miller and his baby.
Yeah.
He just sent a picture to me.
Oh, did it? Was everything okay?
Yeah, see what that looks like.
Hold it up. You know what? We should name that one Carter.
How cute.
That is absolutely adorable. All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.